I'm not calling me, Lord, now everybody's being nice and polite. And I'm gonna ask God to be transparent. Please, the nations of the United States of America, into the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a caller in heaven, we are grateful for the day you have given to each of us to live. We pray, Lord, that in this day that we have brought honor to your name by the way that we lived, conducted our lives today. We pray for the forgiveness of times that we did. Lord, as we enter to this meeting, I pray, Lord, that you'll give us wisdom to conduct this business to the best benefit of citizens of our town. We pray this in Jesus' name.
I'd like to thank everybody for learning out tonight. We have several guests that have been arrested as we go along in the meeting. Will we start with Jay, if he would give a roll call?
Alderman Bets?
Present.
Alderwoman Doorway?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman McCoy?
Present.
Alderman Probst?
Here.
Have court present.
We're now convening a town meeting. First order is to approve our minutes from previous meeting. We also have a meeting and also a special meeting that I think overlooked this last meeting, that we need to approve both those sets of meetings. Counsel, do I need to get a motion on both separately or just address them both in the motion?
I think you can address them both in the same motion.
Address them both. So can I have a motion? If anybody got any questions on the minutes?
These are for December 12th and December 15th. Is that correct?
Any questions? All right, I hear most will accept the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Most made by Alderman Dory. Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Okay. All right, first item is Deborah Moe. Our CPA is going to give us a financial report.
Okay, I'm looking at the balance sheet that I've included in your packets for November the 30th of 2017. Hydro Royalty Fund did receive 2.0 million in their royalties for the month of November, so we show in their cash 1.9 million. We're still maintaining the reserve set by the ordinance of 2.3 million. We have a due from other agencies of 1.388, and that's from Catalyst Royalty that we should receive in February for the months of October, November, and December. We also have due from other funds in the Hydro Royalty Fund of 833,000, which is the amounts due from the Utility and General Fund, over and above 38 mils, and the leep of revenue that we transfer to those funds every month. So it's receivable from the hydro, from those funds. And then we have an $890,000 accounts payable, which includes the rebate payable, actually, of $600,000 that was approved in November. So it's showing as a liability. That's pretty much all that's on the balance sheet on the front page. And then I wanted to bring out in the Utility Fund, we've shown a receivable of 1.6 million from the Utility Department, and we're also showing a due to other funds of a million one, and those are primarily due to the General Fund and the Hydro Funds. We're also showing $655,000 receivable in the Industrial Park Fund for Project Blue, which is primarily their rent. Then on the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances for the five months ended November the 30th, I have all the funds listed there with just their revenues and expenditures listed and the changes in net position. And the combined total revenue is 12,161, and the expenditures is 12,380, for a net decrease in the change in position of 218,817. On my next report, I have the budget to actual summary by fund type for the five months ended November the 30th. And this is showing the General Fund comparing the actual to budget. And the ones, things that I want to point out is, under other revenues for the General Fund, it's at 429,000 versus the 56,000 that we had budgeted for. And that's because of the police department vehicles, you know, we had to show the full amount of the police purchase of 286,000 is included in that amount. And it's also included in the machinery and equipment under capital outlay. So those two, those were not included in the budget. We'll need to amend the budget for those items later. Also, I wanted to point out that our Personnel Services and the General Fund are at 44%, which is, should be at 42%. So we are running higher than our budgeted amount. And some of that is due to the retention program payment that was made in November, and then some of it is due to an error in the budget. I haven't really quite resolved it all, but I do know there were some understatements on the payroll. It didn't have anything to do with anybody's pay changing. It was just the way I calculated the salaries for the police department, I know for sure, in when I picked up the amount in the budget. Anyway, let's see. That's in the General Fund. And then the Special Revenue Fund, I wanted to point out that their revenues were only at 33%, which is underbudgeted, primarily due to the sales cuts is lower than expected, and also due to the timing of receiving some of the revenues. I also wanted to point out that we do have 287,000 in other improvements, which is primarily due to the Front Street project that's currently going on. And we also received reimbursement for that, which is included in the revenues. And then on the Debt Service Fund, we are currently, we're quite under budget because of the timing of the debt payments. You know, we're only paying right now through November was the muni complex debt. But in December, we would have made some payments on the bonds that were due twice a year. But anyway, that showed in December. And then on the Capital Projects Fund, I show under the intergovernment, no, charges for services, 552,000 there is primarily due to the rent that we are supposed to be collecting for Project Blue. And then we also have 358,000, that's actual funds that's been spent on engineering fees, which we do not get reimbursed for on the port. And as you can see, that the Capital Projects Fund is not picking up any cost yet on the construction of the port. It's just the engineering fees. This is through November. So on the Enterprise Fund, which is your Utility Fund and your Convention Center, we're showing the revenues are, you know, about where they should be, except they are really running lower in the Electric Department because of consumption. So we are feeling some of the crunch there on that decrease in revenue. And personnel expenses are a little bit over, but it's primarily due again to the retention payments that were made in November. And the total actual revenues are 12,161, and the expenses are at 12,380, for a net decrease in change in the position of 218,817. So that primarily gives the, where we are found, where we're headed. So, you know, that's it. Have any questions?
When you talked about on the balance sheet for the Industrial Park Fund, you said in receivables, you have 655,000.
That's right.
And it's showing net allowances for bad debts?
There probably are no bad debts in there. If it is, it's not something that I create or said. It's probably set by Silas Simmons if there are any in the audit, and that number just carries forward. I know that is with the Utility Department until, I guess, at the end of the year, they might do an analysis or something that determines what that figure is. I really don't do anything with it. But I don't think there's any in the Industrial Park Fund.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Deborah. Number two, we have Mr. Wes Gorer with Silas Simmons. He's gonna give us an update on our external audit as well as a report from the legislative auditor.
I have to pause that. I saw your agenda and I saw it said city audit report, and I thought, oh, they're looking for an audit report. I'm here to give you an update on where we are right now. As you know, the statutory deadline for your audit here, June 30, 2017, is December 31st. We were on schedule, we're gonna get it out. First conversation I had with someone from the Legislative Auditor's Office, they said, look, we've got a pending report that we're gonna issue. We're gonna involve you in the exit conference with the city. Call us next week and we'll talk to you about possibly doing a viewing right after that, because it may impact your audit. From that, I called them next week and they said, look, it's still in the view, we want you to give an extension, which is kind of unusual. I thought, they don't really grant extensions. But here they were asking me to give an extension. So we did, we filed the extension with the blessing of the mayor. And typically, it's a 90-day extension. They granted the extension to January 31st, which kind of leads me to believe that their audit, their report should be out very shortly, because I would believe that that would be in mid-time to make any changes to my audit that I'll need to make, you know, before January 31st. Typically, when they issue a report, the reason they would ask me to hold my audit like they're doing right now would be that there may be some things in there that may require, some findings in their report that may require follow-up in the future. And they don't really come in and follow up. What they do is put that on the external auditor to follow up on future audits. So, you know, more likely than not, we'll make reference to their report and our report, and then whoever's conducting your audit going forward will actually follow up and see, you know, what progress has been made in addressing any findings that have been made. So that's kind of where we are. Hopefully, if things go as I think they're gonna go, you'll have that Legislative Auditor report here pretty shortly. We'll be able to go and get our report submitted to them, they'll approve it, and hopefully we'll be here delivered through February, maybe. So that will be what I would hope for. Just to kind of give you an idea, I can't really get into the details of my audit because it's not finalized yet, but I do feel like I've got a good report for you this year. So, I'll kind of leave you with that. If you got any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any other got questions?
No questions.
Wes, thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Hopefully, I'll be seeing you February.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, number three, on the agenda, license application. The first one we have is Joshua Freed. Is he here? He has some 40 fit, and I think that's up there at the old, I'm not sure, but I think it's at the old, our retire. And any questions? I hear motion approved.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Dory. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bets. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next one is Cynthia Credit. That's her name. It's the home road and the trade name will be rolled into the Staffing Agency LLC. Is she here tonight? Okay. Is there any questions on this? Is her here motion approved?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Dory. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Outdoor sign applications, we don't have a, any outdoor sign applications. We put those in the blanket there rather than list them in the business, so we didn't have any sign applications for this particular meeting.
I noticed on this cross, there was a sign stuck in the window, is what I saw.
That's not, I don't think, my mom and fiance, they didn't actually ask for a sign permit, but we will address that.
Maybe I have another. Something in the window.
Right. I think there's gonna be more numbers of that. That's a good question. Okay. Next, last Thursday, we were notified that long-term employee, a city clerk, Vicki Burns, has announced her retirement. We all know that Vicki's been battling illness, and she turned in her retirement request to be effective January 31st of this year. And we certainly want to remember Vicki in our prayer. We want to thank her for her past service and her dedication and loyalty to the town. I know that I didn't get to be around Vicki very much, you know, but I was, you know, when she, when I was elected. She's a, she's a good person, she's a good hard worker, and has a lot of knowledge. And we're gonna miss her for sure, but I want everybody to remember her in our prayer that she battled her illness. But anyway, I just wanted to announce that. We might be doing some more things later on, you know, talking about Vicki and that so forth, but we'll talk about those at a later date. And with her vacating that position, we're gonna have to appoint a city clerk. And tonight, I'd like to appoint Jay LaShawn, and it does require approval from the Council for his appointment. And that's gonna be, you know, of course, we have resolution, I mean, an ordinance that sets his salaries, but Jay is agreeable, and I think everybody is agreeable, and we've talked with Council about it, that for the current time, even though ordinance is saying what the city clerk's salary is, that we can introduce the resolution to keep his, next meeting, to keep his salary at what it is until such a time, maybe over in July, when the new budget comes out, we can review his, you know, what his responsibilities are and adjust it from there. Any questions from Alderman?
Well, there's one. In the new policy manual, on page six, under employee selection process. You got it?
No problem. That's an employee selected, he's an officer in this appointment, his position is appointed.
It has to be voted on by the board.
Right, it has to be approved by the board, I think. That's correct.
We need to put that job out before 30 days and see if it's announced after.
It's appointment, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a hire of employee. Every job that we've had come up since I've been in office that, whether it's an apartment head or whatever, we have done that. We've advertised as an employee that is required to advertise, we have advertised those, and I haven't made any of those selections whatsoever. Matter of fact, the department head, whether Johnny or Mark or Joey or Lee, they come to me and they tell me they've selected and give my approval with it. And that's how that's worked. This is not an employee. He is, he's considered an officer of the town, and that is an appointment that I make. And that's just, but it is subject to approval by Alderman.
Now, you said you didn't hire, you hadn't, you didn't appoint anybody. What about the new position in City Utility Department? Kevin Martin got on.
We had advertised for that and said we've reviewed our application, and that's, we can be looked at.
You did advertise for 30 days on that?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Well, we hired from applications, so we had a previous job.
We had, we had, that's correct.
We didn't have 30 days. She would leave her two weeks, we didn't have 30 days.
My concern on this, and I shared this with you Friday when we spoke by phone, was that we have an ordinance in place to set the salary. And I, my fear is that a simple agreement would not supersede an ordinance that is in place. And what I had asked from you on Friday is that we go ahead and add to the agenda the, you know, the first step in going ahead and changing that ordinance to reflect the salary change. And you said that you did not get ordered out and you would talk with?
We did, and we, we did confer, and I, you know, I wanna call and tell you, I did visit with Council, and he informed that he thinks the appointment at this time, that it's good, I mean, we're good to do that, and that if y'all want to go ahead and introduce the ordinance at our next meeting, he will only be in office and be sworn in for two weeks before we'll have a meeting to amend the ordinance or introduce amendment to put it at his current salaries. And until a future time that we would review it and review it.
Again, the fear that I have is if he's sworn in on February 1st, the ordinance in place is that the town clerk makes $75,490. And I just don't know, I mean, legally, if just an agreement supersedes a law that is in place, I would feel more comfortable tabling this appointment until such time that the ordinance to set his salary has been completed and then proceed with the appointment. Like, on the paperwork that we have, he's already listed as a signator, as the assistant clerk, and I believe that he could continue in that capacity until we have our protocol in place as far as ensuring that we are doing what is legal and necessary where his salary is concerned.
Again, I defer to Council, I mean, your opinion on it, that, you know, you're talking about a two or three-month process to get that done, I mean, by ordinance and amending that ordinance.
If you want to amend that ordinance.
Right. If you want to amend the order.
You want to amend the ordinance. You don't want to amend the ordinance.
I still think by resolution, we can, we can say that if it's until that ordinance is amended, that his salary will be set at that time. Is that?
When I looked over this, of course, the clerk's salary is fixed by ordinance. But the clerk whose salary was fixed by ordinance is now resigned.
Right.
That salary doesn't carry over to the new person. That was her salary.
But does the ordinance specifically name Vicki Burns? Does it specifically say the clerk of the town of Adel?
It says the clerk, and I'm telling you, my opinion is, that's her salary. And the new clerk's salary would be fixed by the board. When I talked with the mayor, I thought it was doubling up on time expenses of passing two separate sets of ordinances, you know, to have him set a fee by ordinance for the time between the 1st of February until the end of June, where we can clean that up at the 1st of the next fiscal year. That's my thoughts.
So what about maybe interim city clerk until our protocol has been followed through legally?
Jay's been doing the job.
I don't think that changes the basic law, you know, whether you call him an interim or a clerk or whatever.
I mean, I still feel like we should be able to appoint him, I mean, and make it effective February 1st, with the condition that we know that we're going to, you know, amend that ordinance. You know, and establish his salary being what it is currently, and then reviewing it at the first of, you know, for the next budget. That'll get us, that'll get us, you know, compliant, we'll have a clerk, and we'll have somebody that can sign documents and do things that the clerk does.
But you said, I mean, it's, you said he's already doing the job. So what I'm saying is, let's get our ducks in a row as far as the salary setting is concerned, allow him to continue in the position that he is now, with the pay that he is now, until such time as we can have a change in the ordinance to reflect what the city clerk made.
I don't agree, but if y'all, y'all have to say, y'all have to prove it. I mean, I'll ask on you one more time, do you think that, I mean, as far as continuing the business of the town without a clerk?
They put us out of compliance?
Okay. I think it would be the best practice to appoint, you know, the clerk tonight to take the office February 1st. And if you want to proceed with the mechanics for fixing by ordinance the salary that he's making now, you do that. It's just that then, a few months down the road, if the mayor looks at things they're doing, and he decides, well, I think he needs an increase, and y'all agree, then we do the procedure again. I was just saying, why double up in a few months?
I guess the reason is, is that's the way it really should be, is the way I see it, you know. And basically, is that the ordinance is gonna be followed that way. No questions asked. The other way, we think, I mean, are you sure you think that would be fine? You know, that's my question. I mean, is it something for sure, or is it something we?
I see no problem with appointing him tonight with the understanding that his salary is gonna be the same as it is today through at least the end of the fiscal year. And then, if you want to follow up with going through the procedure of passing an ordinance to say that, that's fine. At the time, I just didn't think that, you know, because there's no, there's no big penalties that come into play until the auditors come in and we're not in compliance.
Well, me personally, I know he has been doing the job from me being up here all the time, so I have no problem with that. So I'll make the motion to appoint him tonight with the contingency of his salary remaining the same as it is under the assistant city clerk's salary.
Make a motion, babe. Second by Alderman Bets. All in favor? Do we need a roll call?
Please.
Okay, roll call, Jay.
Alderman Bets?
Yes.
Alderwoman Doorway?
None.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy?
No.
Alderman Probst?
No.
Three to two against.
Okay. Three against, I mean, three against and two for. All in favor? All right, number six. Lead a board resolution to make applications to state bond commissions for consent and authority for the town today for a amount not exceeding $2.5 million. This is technically a renewal of the loan that we have now. It's a line of credit for 2.5. I think our current indebtedness on that is 1.8, is that right? Deborah, 1.8? And upon that renewal, we're looking at maybe decreasing it another 200,000 in March when we renew that. So this is just to renew it for another year as we look forward until we decide how we're gonna either liquidate the debt or get money to take care of it. So do I hear a motion for that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bets. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Number seven, now to introduce the ordinance, and then a board approval, to introduce the ordinance authorizing the issuance of certificates of indebtedness not exceeding $2.5 million. Again, this is a renewal of what we have now, and do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll give that, Alderman. Gardner, second by, second, go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Bets. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Number two, we need board approval of the resolution to accept the low water bid, I mean, the low bid for the Bard's loading facility. And I have, we have Don Murray here with Brownham and Associates, and while he gives all the board director to maybe discuss and just kind of give them a brief overview of where we at.
On the Bard's loading facility, we were able to get three good qualified bids on the facility, and Womack came in the lowest qualified bid. That was approximately, including the two off, that came in about 8.4 million. The money that's available was about 8.7 million. That leaves us an additional 200, somewhere around 270,000 for contingency. Not a lot of contingency on a project this size, but we were excited to get, you know, the bids within the engineer's estimate and the money that was available. And this project will be funded because the town has previously paid their portion of the funding, and correct me if I'm wrong. of the funding, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, then the facility planning will pay all of these funds, um, on construction. The contract will be for three hundred calendar days. Of course, the day won't start till we have a pre-construction meeting and set the numbers to proceed, uh, which will have that shortly after the contract were executed, subject to y'all's approval. Uh, the, though the bid has been approved by the facility planning, the last step towards the warranty contract is y'all's acceptance. That's all I have, are there any other questions?
I do want, uh, Steve Weeks who's here tonight, and Catherine Cartwright are serving on the fourth committee, and I thank them for their service. I stopped by and visited them for a minute, that's a highly paid job, so, no, it's really free, they donate your time, and they've done a good job on that, so. Guys, anything you'd like to add to that?
Just listen to me.
Do you want to give a timeframe right now, while, what, we're looking at, far as the court proceeding and the construction might start?
The contracts have been sent to Womack and Sons, we're waiting on them to execute them and get their attorneys and stuff and all that, they'll come back to us, we'll have you execute them in tonight's meeting, they'll go to the facility planning for final blessing, and then, so we're looking at maybe a pre-construction meeting, uh, we're hoping the first of March, end of February.
And while, in your experience, what kind of timeframe, like Barnwell, the river, and things of that nature?
It varies, uh, it'll depend on what his, uh, the timing for the shipments of the items that he has in construction. He'll ask for, you know, additional days away before his day the construction starts, but it'll depend a lot on what, how, how long a pre-order time he has to have in. So it's kind of difficult to tell, really, uh, this is a rather large project.
And Heather, you said that this stuff would make us operational, is that correct?
Correct.
And then they, y'all start earning revenue.
Correct.
Kind of, huh?
Any other question from all of them? Go ahead, motion for that resolution?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much again for your work. Uh, now, with two, we're going to need a resolution to adopt the USDA language access plan, this is, I'm gonna let, uh, Bill Murray address this, this is something, we've had meetings with USDA in the last few months, and they have outlined some things that we have to have in place to continue with USDA funding, there's some things that you have to do, it's just, I'm gonna let Bill explain that.
Well, they, they do a compliance review, that's what this is. And it does take quite a bit of time, and there's, it's a lot of paperwork, and it's just involved governmental process, but the only thing that they require approval of, and I'm not sure why it's the only thing, but the only thing they do is the language access plan, this is a federal government thing, where they, they have concern in most areas about whether you can provide an interpreter, if you have people that can't speak English, or, we have, we, we're in compliance because we have the high-speed cards up that somebody can point to and tell us, we, we have, and this plan tells you all the people you get in touch with are different language interpretations, we do not have to supply one or hire one or anything because we don't have enough foreign language people, speaking people in our town that can't speak English. The language that we have the most of is Yerdu. It's not Spanish, it's Hispanic, it's Yerdu, which is, I'm not sure really what that is, but the point is, we have a very small percentage that can't speak English, so we don't have to provide an interpreter all the time. We just have to have an access plan approved, so they know we've, we know how to find somebody.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, any other questions? Motion to change this resolution?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
All, correction, Alderman Gardner was the second. All right, number, item number ten, discussing the LA Louisiana Department of Transportation traffic study. Uh, back when we first got in office, there were some concerns about, there were a lot of complaints about the, the truck route coming from the, over cross from the dock and storage area to going down Riverside and getting out on the highway, and we requested DOT come in, and they did, they did a lot of study, they, they put down traffic counters, they did a lot of different things. Anyway, we've got, uh, some of their initial suggestions to do, and they're gonna leave it to us to kind of, you know, pick and choose what we want to do in these areas. It's primarily dealing with Concordia Avenue up to Locust Street, this past Locust Street, if you're looking at a block area, it's, it's, uh, the square actually goes just to the east side of the Convention Center to the river, all the way over to Fourth Street, and up, back to, back up to Carter Street and over to, actually, Florida Street, so it's a square, and we've got all that, but I just wanted to put this out there for discussion and meetings, if anybody wants, Bill, go ahead.
Well, I just want to add, it's, this is a very preliminary thing they presented to us, they've done, they hired a company, uh, the Louisiana Department of Transportation hired consultants to come in and do studies and present a very preliminary plan. We've given you the, the, some pictures and things that maybe you can understand, it gets confusing, so I'd be glad if somebody wants to visit with me and go over it. Right now, it's for the Alderman to look at it and understand that we're gonna put together, without making any changes to it, a presentation for the public, to have public meetings about it, I've asked the Louisiana Department of Transportation to give us an overview picture, so it's easier to see what they're talking about doing, instead of little pieces of it, to try to put it together in your mind. So right now, it's just for you, for your packet to look at, ask us questions, let me help you understand what they're presenting, and he'd let us hear what y'all think about it, and then we're gonna have that same plan presented to the people to take a look at and for their input before anything's done. And by the way, they, they have eight hundred and, I don't know the exact figure, eight hundred and seventy thousand allocated state funds for this, we don't have to do anything, we can stop at that point, we would have to have oversight, we'd have to pay, but as far as any of the work to do it, they would do it up to that level, and we can stop at that level, not do anymore, or decide what we do from there. Might be they can do whatever we want them to do for that amount of money, so.
That was gonna be my question, if...
We might not be able to do this whole, we don't know yet.
Right.
They haven't put a dollar to you to do it till we come up with, yeah, if this is what we'd like to see you do, then they're gonna give us an estimate.
Aye.
I think, did I, did I anticipate what you were gonna ask, okay?
Yes, ma'am, Dennis?
There was a grant written on the Florida Transportation for a slip run off Carter Street, is this part of that project?
No, they have another study being done, you're talking about off to the right, slip off to the right, they have their, that's involved in the Highway eighty-four study they're doing as part of that project, it hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay. All right, that was just for information, and, uh, you're certainly welcome to be leading the public to come in and get copies of what they were recommending, and we'll get with you on public media.
Are you telling me that, is this saying that the majority of the traffic comes down Riverside and go...
No. That's, all they're doing is trying to handle problems with, it doesn't, it involves Concordia Avenue all the way down, involves the accesses and the addresses from Concordia Avenue into it, up to, what's that street? Magnolia?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Where you have those problems with, where people are merging into Concordia, and people are crossing Concordia, you get down where Old Power Safe and Lock is, and you got people coming in this way and that way, stop signs all around, they're looking, they're studying that whole situation through there. Uh, and Concordia Avenue itself, because of the speed that people travel on Concordia Avenue, because it's such a thoroughfare with, you know, wide open, so they're trying to, to have a way of, of giving us bike path, parallel parking locations, some green spaces in places where it's not green space now, to try to make a more, what's the word? Understandable, reasonable traffic flow that, that can slow the traffic down a little on Concordia Avenue, and we're gonna look at Riverside as part of it, and the turn on Maple, is it Maple? What's the turn that goes Wilson?
Wilson.
Beefing up that turn on Wilson, we probably might look at speed limits on Riverside, and how we make sure that truck, traffic going through there is not at excessive speed, it's the ramp coming down off the levee that hits the, hits Riverside, and you can't see back behind you, and can't, you know, it's all that stuff is what they're looking at.
Making it safer.
Sorry?
Making it safer.
They're making the whole thing operate better, they looked at how, where the, where the congestion points are, where people are confused about what to do, or where it's cumbersome for traffic, and they're trying to clean it up to where everything operates better.
Just like Bill said, even where you come at the turn by the fountain, and turn by, go by Magnolia Apartments, you know, it's got that little area down there that still kind of goes like that, they're looking, doing a lot of things there, we'll make that available to you, and that's something we certainly want to...
We want y'all to understand it before we get that over to you and do a cover.
Okay. Item number eleven on the agenda is, head and loans will give us an economic development report.
An hour will be about forty-five minutes or so. So, so, you clearly got a pretty good update on the board.
Let her get the microphone, so people in the back can hear, I know that's probably the...
Even better.
Just click it on.
That mic.
Can you hear me?
Uh, I get it.
Is that better?
Better.
So, um, you received an update on the forward and the funding, um, we will continue to work with the board director and, um, the engineer to, and the State of Louisiana to, uh, make sure all of the funding, um, you know, is, is handled properly through the town and with the town, um, we work very closely with facility planning at State of Louisiana, um, with the pay estimates and submitting all the proper documentation paperwork, so we'll continue to do that, um, because obviously, port infrastructure is very important to, um, economic development and our ability to grow, um, our industrial base here in Adalia, and quite frankly, throughout the region. Um, so we will continue to work on that throughout this year, um, I know everybody's been waiting on an announcement with Project Blue, and I don't think anybody is any more excited than I could be about being able to announce this project, um, but, you know, sometimes things slow a project down, but, uh, everything has continued to move forward for that project, I know people have been concerned, uh, because there's not been a lot of talk, um, but things do progress forward, they've just been at a slower pace than we anticipated, uh, before. Um, they, uh, do have their lender and their equity in place, um, their loan has received guarantee through USDA at the federal level, and for anybody that's ever dealt with USDA knows, that can take quite some time to do. Um, they're finalizing documents right now with their lender, uh, they're working on, they had to get a new appraisal on the building and their equipment and all of those things, so they're working through all of those things, um, and so we hope, you know, to continue through that process, and, you know, we hope for a low bank sooner rather than later at this point. So please, continue to be patient with us on that, uh, we do feel, still one hundred percent confident that they are going to locate here, they've put a lot of money into this project already, and, uh, we hope that they invest, you know, even more in, over the next several years. So, um, just as a reminder, it will be a twenty-four seven manufacturing operation at Olford Bloom Plant, they're leasing the building in seventy acres, uh, currently, and will plan to, they have the option to purchase that property, which is the intent, um, a minimum of three hundred jobs, um, with an average wage of about thirty-two thousand plus benefits, um, and a minimum investment of about forty million dollars, so, um, still something to be very excited about, and can definitely change, uh, the way our economy has been going, so. More to come. In addition to that, um, the Today Technology Center, if you don't know, is, is up and running, uh, we're working closely with the committee to, uh, work on the services provided through the incubator and the co-working space, uh, we are talking about some small business workshops that we're gonna deliver there, uh, probably the first one will be at the end of this month, I think, uh, and then we'll also do an annual career academy to try to create and generate a pool of, um, permits for that, for that facility, so that's an exciting program that we're working on. Um, ACT certified work rate community, I talked to the board about this before, we did become certified, um, as a sheriff, in April of this past year, and then, once we met those goals, of course, they just gave us more goals for us to reach, so we are in the maintaining phase right now. We've reached ninety-two percent of those goals, and, um, we have only a few, you know, checks that we have to meet to meet those goals, and then they give us more goals, so at this point, we're kind of pacing ourselves a little more, um, but we're working very closely with our existing businesses and industries to try to utilize, um, this program, which ultimately is, we're working with our workforce to become, uh, to take this certification test, so it would give them a credential saying that they have the capability to work. Um, so that's what we hear a lot with our existing businesses and industry when we visit with them, is that they're having a hard time, um, with a capable workforce, a quality workforce. Um, we have a great technical community college here that can train, but some of its, those soft skills, you know, aren't even capable of performing the things that we've been training to do, um, and that's with the certification, our certificate tells employers that I am capable of performing those duties. Um, we have over eight hundred, what they call NCRCs, uh, national, uh, I forget now what it means, but it's the credential that they receive once they take the test, um, so it's kind of a work rating program. So we will continue those efforts, um, throughout the year too. Site certification, we have two industrial parks here in Adalia, um, there's one where the Brooklyn building is, and we will have, um, additional land at that facility, which is, you know, the renegade, uh, that we will continue to market, um, and then we also have the new industrial park out by the port, uh, so we are working with Louisiana Economic Development to certify those properties, and what that means is that they're ready to be built upon. Um, at this point, Louisiana Economic Development is choosing those certified properties to, uh, market over other properties, because they know how quickly, um, they can turn those sites around to industrial planning, so we're working with them to get those two properties certified. We've had them come in, and they've visited, uh, both properties, we've sent them all of the work that we've already had done on the properties to date, uh, we feel like there's not a whole lot of work left to be done on that, it's just, you know, taking those steps to get it certified. So hopefully, we'll finalize that this year. Um, we also worked with the town to submit capital outlay application to the State of Louisiana for the utility upgrade, um, which would include the, uh, additional funding to finish the raw bin initiative by the Lake Fibers, we're out town. Um, we have applied through the state, I think, the past two years, and did not receive funding in the budget, but because we're moving on funding with the port, we're hopeful that the state will say we will dedicate additional dollars to the town of Adalia, so we're gonna work on that, and, uh, be down the mat, and we should try to push to get that funding. Um, and finally, Interstate fourteen, um, this is something that we will work towards to, um, help get the federal designation to, uh, identify a route for Interstate fourteen. Uh, as you may know, the state of Texas has only just twenty-five miles that have been designated for I-14, and they're wanting to work with, and they are working with Louisiana and Mississippi to, um, continue that designation through central Louisiana, through Adalia and that just and all the way to Laurel, Mississippi, so, um, we will be supportive in that effort. Um, right now, the goal for this year is to work with our congressional delegation to designate that four four, for I-14 designation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Now, we're fixing to go into executive session for our promotion to do that, you're welcome to stay, but, uh, the, the, the meeting, the meeting is over as far as action items on agenda items, we're through with that, but again, you're welcome to stay, if you want to hang around, visit, some of these, these folks have talked tonight, you can, but, uh, I'm gonna now ask the, the promotion to go into executive session.
Paul, we do, I'd like to make the motion that we add an agenda item for an ordinance establishing utility rates for the town of Adalia.
Okay, that's gonna require a unanimous vote, and, so, do I hear a motion if we add this agenda? Both made by all the four, do I hear a second?
Second.
And by all the pro, all in favor? Both, raise your hand, all in. Okay, it's gotta be unanimous to add the agenda item, it fails, so, lack of a vote. So now, do I hear a motion for us to enter to executive session?
I'll make that motion.
That made by Alderman Doray, there a second?
Second.
Second by all the votes, all in favor? Both, raise your hand, all in. Okay, it's gotta be unanimous to add the agenda item, it fails, so, now, do I hear a motion for us to enter to executive session?
I'll make that motion.
That made by Alderman Doray, there a second?
Second.
Second by all the votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Back then, do I hear a motion that we exit our executive session?
Aye.
Both made by Alderman McCoy, there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor? Back then, do I hear a motion that we exit our executive session?
Aye.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, there a second? Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor? Okay, now do I hear a motion that we accept the actions taken and recommendations of the police chief in regards to the personnel of the matter as discussed in...
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, there a second?
Second.
Second by all of everybody? So just pick one, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, pick whoever made the motion, and all in favor?
Aye.